This is your weekly Board of Selectmen's meeting. The date is Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018. I call this meeting to order at 7:32 PM. This meeting is being audio and video recorded, and it will be broadcast live on Channel 9, as well as replays will be broadcast on Channel 9, and the meeting will be placed on YouTube. And at this time, I ask that we all stand for a Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request a moment of silence for former state Senator Brian Joyce, who passed away very recently.
I just wanted to say, and Madam Administrator, I know you knew Mr. Joyce as well. I just wanted to be very brief and say that there's a quote that reminds me of former Senator Brian Joyce. People may forget what you said. People may forget what you did, but people never forget how you made them feel. And Mr. Joyce, for me, getting my start out in politics was always a breath of fresh air, and he was always very supportive. So I just wanted to commemorate him. Madam Administrator?
That's a really nice way to sum things up. I had the privilege of working with Senator Joyce, not only as my own state senator, but as a colleague. He had West Bridgewater as a district, and I found him to be a great fighter for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you, and our condolences to the Joyce family during this difficult time. And as is customary this evening, we will start with public input. Okay, we will have another chance for public input towards the end of the meeting, as is customary. And at this time, I will yield the floor to our town administrator for the town administrator's report.
Actually, I have nothing to report, but we do have a public hearing. So just a motion to open the public hearing, and then we can get started.
Perfect. I'm entertaining motions to begin the public hearing.
Tell them.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. So we have a public hearing to transfer a liquor license to Alice's Restaurant. And now we have Mr. Stone in the audience. So did you want to just give, I mean, I know why. But did you want to give just like a brief? Yeah, absolutely, sir. And thank you for being here.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Yeah, we are requesting the town help us with a transfer of a liquor license. Because that's currently, excuse me, currently on 1881 County Street. And we are in the process of purchasing said property and would like to move forward with with the transfer of the liquor license.
So the liquor license would, is it okay that?
Of course, yeah.
Okay, so the liquor license would transfer to Alice's, and then Alice's would reside at 1881?
That would be correct, yes. Currently, we do have a beer and wine license at the point where the Alcohol Board of Massachusetts approves the liquor license. We would then turn over our beer and wine license before we, because I can't, I guess we cannot hold two licenses at once in the same town. So we would move forward with that at that point.
Okay. Out of curiosity, there is a bar area currently at the restaurant that is at 1881 County Street. Is it your plan, or maybe that's too far down the road to keep the structure like as it is?
The structure will be kept the way it is. We will be kind of merging both restaurants. So we will be remaining with the breakfast and lunch and the Friday night dinners that we do normally, as well as adding more dinners, hopefully, for maybe Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Don't really know what night, Saturday, as well as having the bar open, as well as being able to have drinks when you come in for dinner.
Very nice.
What about the pizza? You're gonna?
We are doing the best to keep the pizza and the pizza ovens and fit everything into the kitchen.
Sure.
But that's all in the planning stages still.
Yeah, sure.
Well, my request is you keep the big cod.
I will do it. We will definitely be keeping that.
As long as they have breakfast, I'll be there.
None of this is contingent on the.
Yeah, no, no. Special interest.
Yes, special interest, understand.
So if I may ask a question, Mr. Chairman? So are you, once, so you're gonna transfer your operations to this new location?
Yes. We're in the process currently of purchasing. Just waiting on a few other things to go through with that at the point that we can make our renovations that are needed to bring things up to code, especially the bathrooms and that kind of stuff, make handicapped accessible. At that point, we will be closing down the current location and moving over to the new location.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I used to do licensing. So my licensing flags are going off that we're gonna get into a renewal season soon. So are you looking to continue with the beer and wine while all of this is going on?
We're hoping that mid-January is the point that we are gonna move. So it might be three or four weeks, whatever the case may be, that, or maybe even longer, that we don't have the beer and wine on the current location. And if that's, that's fine if that's what
What happens?
What happens.
Because there's a couple of things we can do. The Board of Selectmen can delay this vote pending the completion of your purchase and sale. And I know that probably sounds like a bad thing, but it's not in this case because you'd be able to continue with your beer and wine.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So is it possible, because I do trust your expertise on this, is it possible to vote to transfer the liquor license to Alice's Restaurant contingent upon kind of what you mentioned regarding the beer and wine license?
You mean contingent upon the finalization of the purchase and sale?
Correct, yes.
Yes, but we only have three days. Once we get the proof of that final purchase and sale being fully executed and all tidied up, we have three days from that point to send it to the ABCC. So I, my personal recommendation is to actually delay the vote. I just want you to know that it's not hurting you. It's actually helping you in this case. But to continue the hearing until whenever your purchase and sale would be completed. And then you would be able to continue a little bit with your construction and whatever that you might need in your businesses and stuff, or because you don't have to give up the license.
And then go that three-week period without serving the wine? Okay.
Does that make sense?
That does make sense.
If we transferred the full liquor license now, would he get hit with a permit fee now and one in the new year?
Well, that was gonna be my next point. It's always nice to ask for a prorated fee. So if he did go ahead, if you did go ahead and approve it, and we sent it in, and he filed for renewal for the beer and wine, my request of the board would be to prorate, and he would only pay the difference between what the beer and wine costs and what the full liquor license costs, if you went that route. If you go the route that I'm suggesting now, I think it might work out that it would be fine.
One permit fee? Not, okay.
Well, depending on the time, he would have to pay for, because we have to tell the ABCC how much money we've received for these licenses. So he would have to pay. But I would request on behalf of him that it be, if, once the transfer went through and he was granted the larger, the beer and wine, the full alcohol versus the beer and wine, that we would just prorate the difference, and he would just pay the difference for the year. That would, I would request for them.
I like the sounds of that.
Business friendly, yeah.
What would you suggest for a review date?
Well, I don't know, because it would all be contingent on their purchase and sale.
Purchase and sales, we're hoping to be executed by November 1st.
Okay, great, so first meeting in November.
Okay.
We would schedule this. If anything, if that doesn't work out, you just let us know. So I would request that your motion be to continue the hearing to the first meeting in November, which I think is the 7th, but.
Okay.
It would be the 2nd Wednesday.
Seven? Yes, because Election Day is the 6th.
Oh, no, 14th.
Would it be the 14th?
Oh, that's right, the 14th.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this public hearing to November 14th?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Is, so that's okay?
It's fine with me, as long, as long as it's not putting things
Absolutely.
to delay and everything will move forward, then.
And then you'll keep us updated regarding the purchase and sale? And then whenever it happens, like, let's say it didn't happen when you thought it would, we can simply continue the hearing? We'll accommodate that, absolutely.
Very good, I appreciate it.
So when do you actually expect to start serving all alcohol beverage?
Hopefully in mid to end of January.
Very nice.
So you will still have to file for renewal for the beer and wine, even though we are voting in November 14th, presumably, because it won't be final at the ABCC yet?
Okay.
I know that's like the back of my hand, so I'll walk you through it.
That's fine, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. And thank you very much, Mr. Stone. And we hope to see you on the 14th. And at this time, and thank, thank you for keeping me in check on that. We're gonna, it's the new, yeah, I got new glasses, so I'm adjusting. We are gonna move on to the town administrator's report. I know you said you didn't have anything, but I'll let you think of stuff.
I mean, it's been a great day. We're wearing pink today in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and that's really all I have. We've been chugging along.
Thank you very much, Madam Administrator. You can feel free to chime in whenever you like, if you think of something. And we'll move on to old business. And the first agenda item under old business is the proclamation in honor of the Town of Rehoboth 375th anniversary. I know we had a couple of edits or suggestions for changes. Did we make those changes?
They have all been, yes, changed, and here it is.
You reviewed this?
Huh?
You reviewed it?
I saw it, I gave it to Karen this morning.
Perfect.
I didn't see it with the seal. I like the gold seal.
I know, I like when you do that.
We don't get gold seals.
To speed things up, we don't have to read the whole thing.
I don't think you need to read it at all, no. This is just the town wishing the Town of Rehoboth well on their 375th anniversary, which is being observed by a parade on October 7th.
And I found out the actual date of, I don't think, I call it incorporation, but the actual date in 1643 was October 24th.
Oh. We're almost on the date.
I think I was, was May when we.
May 30th?
I was, was May something, yeah.
It was like May 12th, because I put it on the website when I was doing it.
I think it was 1712. 1712, but I think it was May 30th, I believe.
Yeah, this was October 24th.
Perfect.
I wasn't there, but I don't, I think it was.
What's that?
I wasn't there.
Someone you knew. Someone along the line.
Got the Minuteman outfit.
Okay, so I'll entertain motions in relationship to the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to approve and sign the proclamation issued to the Town of Rehoboth in honor of their 375th anniversary.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
How are we gonna deliver this? Can we take it to the parade?
We can, we can ride up together. We'll just hand it to them.
Yeah, the parade thing.
Absolutely, I think that's very fitting. Lord knows where they'll put it while we're marching.
And I think we have a, we have a cover so that it doesn't get weathered or whatever, so.
Just so you know that in the parade, the beginning of the parade with the grand marshal is gonna be, Rehoboth Selectmen will be there, the Rehoboth Minutemen will be there. You guys are maybe way back.
We can pretend to be a militia man.
Group 1 or something?
It could be the 1st Division, but we're even before the 1st Division. But unfortunately, we're behind the Clydes. Clydesdale.
Oh, Clydesdale.
So we're gonna wear boots.
Yeah. Keen eye.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Before we move on any further, I just wanted to comment. So last meeting that we had last week, it was a long meeting, and I said before we went, and I believe we all said this, before we went to about twice-a-month meetings, that some of them might be longer because you're skipping a week. Cable ended up, I believe, and it wasn't them who turned the switch off. I think it automatically turns off at a certain time. So I think going forward, I as the chairman, and I'm not gonna shut anyone off, but we need to be mindful for the sake of people watching, because there could have been one or two people, I don't know, who was still watching at that time. I don't know why they would be. But I do think we should be a little more mindful, and I'll do my best to make sure that we're not going over that limit so that cable is shutting it off and then we're finishing a meeting.
What time is the cutoff?
11:30.
I was just gonna say, yeah, it was around 11:30.
I asked, I asked if it was something.
Because it wasn't posted. Did they lose the filming? Oh, the end.
It was only like five minutes.
The machine like shuts off.
Yeah.
And there's nothing they can do. It's a program. It's just like it turns on automatically at 7:30, so.
Like the alarm goes off at 11 or whatever.
Okay.
So we'll just, and if that happens, because obviously we're not gonna, you know, we have to accommodate that. So my suggestion would be, if that happens again, whatever is left on the agenda should simply, we'll adjourn, and then we'll carry it over to the next. Is everybody okay with that?
Well, you know, we did, one time there was a snowstorm coming, and what we did, we went down the agenda and said, let's move that to next time, let's move that to next time.
So you select.
So we went ahead of time and said, we can put this one off, because it was, you know, the snowstorm, and we were told it's gonna be bad and all that. So we shortened the meeting that way, and then.
I'm okay with that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, I agree with you, Chairman. I think we ought to make an effort to keep our talk down a little bit, perhaps, not speak as much. I generally believe that we, you know, all of us should be able to speak on each item. And if somebody makes a comment that we want to rebut, but we should keep our rebut, rebuttal very short. But I don't think we ought to go on and on. And if you have to shut me off, that's fine.
You'll be the first one.
I do think that maybe we, yeah. I don't think so, but anyway.
Hey, he's the guy with the Minuteman gun.
Yeah. So I just think we have to be conscious of that. It's not fair to cable people. They work very hard.
Yeah.
For the town, as well as they also, unlike some of us who are retired, the next morning, they're getting up to go to work. And I'm sure you understand what that is. So I think we have to have a, make an effort. Maybe even when we start a meeting, say we're gonna stop at 10:30 or 11:00 or whatever, just. And if the announcements don't get put on or whatever, there may be items that we have to skip, but we, we have to make an effort. And one of those two people that was waiting and watching the meeting was my wife, and she was disappointed that 11:30, that it went off, and she didn't know what happened at the rest of the meeting.
It wasn't exciting, Mrs. Pichikai, I can tell you.
What, we're primetime TV!
So I just think, I concur with you. We have to be conscious of what, you know, here I am going on and on about this. But we have to be responsible. For the people watching, for the cable people that we have here, and.
My suggestion is that if we see our agenda, like tonight's agenda doesn't look very long. So if we see our agenda looks lengthy, that we can have an agreement that a majority vote to continue past 10:30 or 11:00, whatever it is, or at 11:00, make an assessment on what we're going to do. And that will be before the cable shuts off. So if anybody is wondering or left dangling, then they'll be able to actually have a filmed copy of what happened, so.
Thank you. I'm glad we're all in agreement. Good colleagues. Okay, next on the agenda this evening under old business is the third reading of the Performance Evaluation and Procedure Policy, and then a subsequent vote or not to adopt.
So with that being said, do you want us to read this? Or, I mean, it's been online, we've read it twice. How would you like to proceed with that?
My person, I'll give you my personal opinion. So we do have an, this is like now for the public. So we do have, there is no policy that says we have to do this, but there is a prior practice, or best practice, whatever you wanna call it, where we do do three readings before we vote. I'm okay with not doing that. We have been very transparent regarding the policies that this board is considering before we adopt them, regarding getting them online, emailing them out, you know, seeking public input before we do that third vote. So me, as a member of this board, I'm okay, because I know that if people wanted this information, they were very well able to access it. But I'll leave that up to.
I'm not opposed to us not reading this. Again, we've read it twice. Like you said, it's on, it's on record, so people have access to it. If they had any concerns, they could have come here, so I'm okay with it.
I just wanted to add, I'm okay with us not reading it. I still do wanna give the public time to give feedback, so we should still go the three meetings. That I'm okay with, but I don't think we necessarily have to read it. I know folks know how to read, so, and they know how to access it, so. Selectmen Gulart.
No, it's fine with me.
Okay.
And I think we're moving to this electronic packet in the sense of posting the packet online ahead of time. And that's really why I'm most comfortable not reading it, so, okay.
So are you okay with us voting on it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. It was, it's like, this is the third meeting. It was like we read it. So I'm entertaining motions.
I'll make a motion then that we approved the Performance Evaluation and Procedure Policy to be effective January 1st, 2019.
And?
And?
The evaluation document?
Yeah.
And the forms, yeah.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve this policy and the evaluation forms. Any discussion?
I actually just have one point of clarification. So all along, I'm like, yes, of course, this applies to me. My contract says that my evaluation is in May, and that's when my goals were established. So do I have until May to complete my goals or January?
No, I always understood it as you had one year to complete your goals. So the goals that we established after your evaluation.
Are annual.
Correct, so that's next May.
It would have been December, which would have been, we changed it to January, but it would have been December, because that would have been your year.
This would be for everybody, because it's designed to help with like a justifying of an increase for pay, and then you build it into the budget and all of that. But for me, I just want, I need to, I need to manage my goal.
Of course. Well, so when we had that evaluation, that was, it wasn't a mid-year, it was, you didn't have a full year, so it was like a six-month, but it really was that first year.
Yes.
And now you're on your second year. That's how you understood it, correct?
No, the goals that you originally set.
Right, so I have three goals. One, I can finish. It would just mean I have to do a procurement training before January 1st.
Yeah.
The other one is the policy manual, which I was saving kind of for later, but I'll kick it up, and that's fine.
But you've been working on that a long.
Right, so I just wanted to know what my, I guess, deadline was to reach my goals so that I could get an acknowledgement for finishing them. That's all.
My, my understanding was you finished the first set of three or four goals by May of 2018. Then we had your performance evaluation, and then we set three new goals. So you would have.
To be completed by May or by January?
By May, that's a full year.
Okay, that's all I'm asking for. That's my only, thank you very much.
That's how you understood it, correct?
Yeah. That was one of the areas in the contract that should have been ironed out.
Needs to be tweaked.
Because she came in in December originally, yeah.
So I think we talked about that when we met about it, yeah.
So your next evaluation is gonna be in May then?
It's still gonna be in May, because my contract prevails. But I just, where we had talked about this would apply to me, I know this process will apply to me eventually. We'll get that all straightened out. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, and thank you for that question. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. And I did just wanna say, especially to Selectmen Gulart and to Town Administrator Aaronstein, good work on this. This was a commitment that we sort of informally made to the Finance Committee to address some potential concerns they had regarding raises, et cetera. And I really think that this will go a long way to getting everyone on the same page and sort of alleviating those concerns that they had about that.
And one of the goals was at our evaluation last year, we would come up with a professional evaluation form. And then when that discussion came up at the thing con, this just all worked together.
Two birds, one stone.
Come up with a standard form that could be used, yeah.
Absolutely. So good work by everybody, and that is teamwork right there. Good, so, good work by everybody, and that is teamwork right there. Next, we have a second reading of the drug-free workplace policy. Now, we sort of set aside a prior practice by not reading the performance evaluation and procedure policy. Do we want to follow this sort of new practice where we're going to wait the three meetings and maybe not read these? And I'll leave that up to my colleagues. I'm okay with it. That's my position.
Well, we should have the first reading. Right, we should.
Mm-hmm.
But, then after that-
We did it.
Right.
Well, we actually didn't read this one, because it was so lengthy, and we had such a lengthy meeting. So, I don't mind reading this.
Let's split it up. Everybody do a page.
So, it's the s-
This is technically the second reading, but we dispense with the reading of this policy, because we had such a lengthy agenda last meeting.
Right, for that.
So, I think it's-
And we had lengthy discussion about it.
Can we do each a page?
Sure. I think it's-
You can start off, Madam Administrator.
I want to do page four.
This is the drug-free workplace, and for those watching at home riveted by this, because the town of Dayton receives federal funding, we have to have a drug-free workplace policy. So, when you hear the things about marijuana, marijuana is, regardless of its legalization in Massachusetts, it is still a regulated substance or controlled substance at the federal level, so we have to mention it here. Background: The town of Dayton values its employees and recognizes the need for a safe, productive, and healthy work environment. The town of Dayton is committed to providing such a workplace and to fostering the well-being and health of its employees. As safety, security, and productivity are jeopardized when any employee abuses the use of drugs, controlled substances, and other mind-altering substances, hereinafter referred to separately and jointly as "controlled substances" or "alcohol on the job," comes to work under the influence or unlawfully possesses, distributes, or sells controlled substances or alcohol in the workplace. The town of Dayton hereby adopts the following policy to help attain our goal of establishing and maintaining an alcohol- and drug-free work environment. Purpose and applicability: As a recipient of federal funds, the town of Dayton is required to comply with the Drug-Free Workplace Act of 1988. In accordance with that act, the illegal use, distribution, sale, or possession of controlled substances, as defined under the Federal Controlled Substances Act, while on the job or on town property, is an offense warranting disciplinary action up to and including immediate suspension and termination, except as provided by Item 1 of this policy. Any individual who conducts business for the town, is applying for a position or is conducting business on the town's property, is covered by the drug-free policy. This policy shall apply to all existing and newly hired part- and full-time employees, unless restricted or modified in the labor agreement. As a condition of continued employment, employees must agree to abide by this policy and must agree to notify the town administrator if convicted of any state or federal criminal drug statute for a violation occurring in the workplace within five days after their conviction. Violation of this policy shall result in disciplinary action, including but not limited to, suspension and/or termination. The town of Dayton may, at any time and at its discretion, amend, supplement, modify, or change any part of this policy, subject to bargaining. Definitions: Alcohol: Any beverage, mixture, or any preparation, including any medication, containing alcohol.
Controlled Substance: In this policy, the term "drugs" and "controlled substances" are interchangeable and have the same meaning. Unless otherwise provided, these terms refer to marijuana, irrespective of its legalization in Massachusetts, cocaine, opiates, fencyclidine (PCP), amphetamines, including methamphetamines, hallucinogens, narcotics, cannabinoid, any substance for which a prescription is required, which has not been obtained or followed, any substance the use of which impairs the individual's ability to safely perform the essential functions of the job, derivation, or combination of any of the substances contained in this list. Policy: 1. Employees of the town of Dayton are visible and active members of the communities where they live and work. They are inescapably identified with the town and are expected to represent it in a responsible and creditable fashion. While the town has no intention of intruding into the private lives of its employees, the town does expect employees to report for work in appropriate mental and physical condition to perform their jobs in a satisfactory manner. Individuals under the influence of drugs or alcohol in the workplace pose serious safety and health risks, not only to themselves, but also to all those who come into contact with them. As a condition of employment, the town of Dayton hereby notifies every employee that no alcohol or illegal drugs shall be used or held in possession on town property or equipment by an employee during their or any employee's work shift, including all breaks and lunch periods, not including those employees who possess such controlled substances or alcohol as part of their duties, such as police officers. 2. Each employee must abide by the drug-free workplace policy, and each employee must notify the town administrator of any conviction for violation of any state or federal criminal drug law occurring in the workplace within five days of any such conviction. The town shall notify any and all appropriate federal and state agencies, for example, Mass. DOT, if applicable, and further shall have up to 30 days from the time of notification by the employee of such conviction, such as a workplace offense involving drugs, to take appropriate personnel action up to and including termination. The town of Dayton may require, as a condition of continued employment, that the employee participate in an approved drug abuse assistance rehabilitation program, as described in Section 7(c) of this policy. 3. Employees who are under the influence of controlled substances and/or alcohol, either on the job or when reporting for work, or who possess or consume controlled substances not prescribed by their healthcare provider and/or alcohol during work hours, have the potential for interfering with their own, as well as their coworker's, safe and efficient job performance. Such conduct will be just cause for disciplinary action, up to and including immediate suspension and termination, consistent with any just cause provisions of any collective bargaining agreement that pertains to the employee.
4. Employees are expected to follow any directions of their healthcare provider concerning prescription medications, and must immediately notify their supervisor of any prescription medication which may impair their ability to safely perform their jobs. In addition, notification must be given at the time of any testing or screening as to any medication being taken. However, nothing in this policy precludes the appropriate use of legally prescribed medications. 5. Any employee during the employee's work shift, including without limitation all breaks and meal periods, who manufactures, distributes, sells, uses, possesses, or is found to have in the employee's locker or desk or other such repository alcohol or controlled substances which are not medically prescribed, will be suspended immediately pending further investigation, except as provided in Item 1 of this policy. If use or possession is substantiated, disciplinary action up to and including termination will be imposed. In deciding what action to take, the town will consider the nature of the charges, the employee's present job assignment, the employee's record with the town, and other factors relative to the impact of the employee's use or possession. The town will also require that the employee sign a return-to-work agreement. The town will use termination as a last resort, or will reserve termination for a highly egregious incident. 6. Employees subject to random drug testing and screening as a part of their employment or any licenses that they hold that are necessary to do their job, or employees that drive town vehicles, will be subject to higher standards and are forbidden to operate town-owned equipment under the influence of controlled substances or alcohol. The town of Dayton reserves the right, within the limits of federal and state laws, to test any employee for the presence of controlled substances and/or alcohol, should the town believe work, performance, and/or safety of the employee or others is at risk. All employees are prohibited from switching, tampering with, or adulterating a urine, blood, saliva, or breath specimen, or otherwise interfering with the collection and testing process. Such conduct will be viewed as serious misconduct and will result in further disciplinary action up to and including termination. 7. The town of Dayton is committed to the treatment and rehabilitation of employees with alcohol and controlled substance problems, and encourages employees to come forward voluntarily and seek assistance for those problems before they impair performance and/or jeopardize the employee's continued employment. A. It is the responsibility of the town's department heads and supervisors to monitor employees whenever they see changes in performance or behavior that suggest an employee may have an alcohol or drug problem. Although it is not the department head or supervisor's job to diagnose personal problems, they should encourage such employees to seek help and advise them about available resources for getting help. Everyone shares responsibility for maintaining a safe working environment, and coworkers should encourage anyone who may have a drug or alcohol problem to seek help. B. If at any time an employee volunteers to enter an alcohol or drug treatment or rehabilitation program, they will enter without fear of disciplinary action being taken against the employee as a result of seeking treatment, provided the employee stops any and all involvement with the substance being abused and maintains adequate job performance. Such a performance is designed to provide care and treatment, excuse me, such a program is designed to provide care and treatment to employees who are in need of rehabilitation.
Ms. Strong.
The town may require that an employee, in violation of this policy, participate in a drug and alcohol abuse assistance or rehabilitation program. Approved for such purposes by the Town's Employee Assistance Program, EAP, Substance Abuse Professionals, SAP, as a part of the disciplinary action taken by the town, and said participation could be a condition of continuing employment. The town will allow the employee to use crudification, sick leave, or unpaid leave of absence pending successful completion of the above-approved assistance or rehabilitation program. Employees may be required to document that they are successfully following prescribed treatment, and to take and pass follow-up tests if they hold jobs that are safety-sensitive or require driving, or if they have violated this policy previously. Such an employee be found, be found to have committed his second violation of this policy, he or she shall forfeit the opportunity to be granted a leave of absence for treatment, unless otherwise required by state or federal law, and will face possible discipline up to and including termination. D. All employees may request assistance in dealing with alcohol or controlled substance programs from the EAP provider. Employees may confidentially access representatives, counseling, wellness, and other resources at www.theap.com, or by calling 1-800-252-4555, or 1-800-225-2527. While the EAP is a valuable resource in dealing with their personal problems, participation in the program will not prevent disciplinary action for a violation of this policy.
All right. And to the public listening to our reading, if you have any suggestions, comments, concerns, please make sure to get them into us soon, as we do intend to vote on the drug-free workplace policy at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is October 24th. Anybody have anything?
Nope.
All right. We will move on to award the bid for the Tremont Street culvert repair project. And I know you do have perhaps an update on this for us. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, my main concern was prevailing wage and making sure that we weren't forced to throw out our quotation process, because that was such a large part of the cost. So, the good news is, we don't have a problem with prevailing wage. The second bit of good news is that the low bidder, J and R Precast of Berkeley, has agreed to extend his price until April, and will, we will order the culvert, they'll make it, and install it and deliver, well, they don't install, they deliver in place, and that will be done in the late spring. So, we're good to go to award the bid.
So, it's, your understanding then that we're not going to start this process until-
April.
April.
And I know that you had raised some concerns from some residents in that area, directly impacted, or potentially directly impacted by this. So, I guess my question to you before I accept motions is, do you feel like this has sufficiently addressed those concerns that you have?
Yes, I know when Superintendent Tom Ferry was here, we talked about doing this possibly in July and August. Is that still going to be a possibility then?
It really needs to be completed and tidied up by June 30th, but Tom and I have discussed a Plan B. We don't want to do this, but we think we could keep one lane open. I mean, at the end of the day, it has to be addressed.
Yeah. So, my main concern was October, November of this year, that how would it impact a farmer who lives on, or works and lives on Tremont Street. So, I think this satisfies my concerns. We did talk about July and August, because it's going to be a drier period. I'm sure Mr. Ferry is going to take that into consideration when he starts the process. If you're keeping one lane open, that, that would be helpful. So, I'm okay to ready to vote on this once the motion's made.
What I wanted to say to you, Selectman Pacheco, is I actually, I shared those concerns, but in thinking about it, and sort of discussing with our town administrator, I know we're supposed to have a harsh winter, so before we came into this meeting, I did have in the back of my mind just potential concerns of what would happen if, you know, like, there's a sinkhole or something. So, I think that the town administrator, and that's just a what-if, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it is a concern that we have to consider. So, I think that Mr. Ferry, in my opinion, and Town Administrator Ehrenstein, did the best job they could in sort of trying to find a compromise between the needs of farmers who we appreciate and love, but also, you know, the people who use Tremont Street as a throughway.
So, obviously, if there's an emergency, something happens, then we'd have to deal with that.
Mm-hmm.
But, I, I do believe we are taking into consideration the needs of this farmer.
Absolutely.
And I think we are, we are doing that. Plus, there's a lot of water there. I went there last week before the meeting, and there was a lot of water, and I'm sure the rain that we just recently had hasn't helped us. So, I can-
The rain we had later that night, too.
Yes. So, yeah, very late that night, because it was raining when we left here, at 12 o'clock. Not to bring that up again. But, no, I'm satisfied with this, and I appreciate the work that you've done on this, and you and Mr. Ferry's done on this. So, I didn't want it to sound like I was being critical of you or Mr. Ferry last week, but I, it was a concern that I, I felt was needed to be brought up to the attention of the board. So, I'm glad everything worked out.
Absolutely. And I do thank you for raising that concern, and I do thank, again, you and Mr. Ferry being mindful of that and trying to find some way that, you know, we can make everybody happy in a small way. So, I do appreciate that very much. Selectman Goulart.
So, is, does it have to be done and paid for by June 30th?
It should be. I mean, it doesn't have to be, but it's better, and we are also on some time limits, too. As you know, that, that's a very busy time for the Highway Department.
And he's, I think he estimated two weeks?
Two weeks, two and a half? If it's one lane open, it's longer, for obvious reasons, but-
And a two and a half weeks was if the weather's good. So, if it rains for a couple of days, it's going to delay it.
Well, the other thing, too, is if it's done in April, there's one week school buses won't run. So, that's a, that's a plus. And I, I did have some contacts with people that were supporting the position of the farmer, and told them that this was coming up tonight, and I would wait to see, you know, what came out of the research. And, and I said, you know, we talked about the schedule, we talked about the farmer, we talked about the inconvenience for travelers. The bottom line is, the main issue is safety. So, if Mr. Ferry feels that the culvert that's there, based on normal experience, is going to be okay until whatever date they come up with, and I, I don't have a problem with it. Obviously, if something happens, the ballgame changes, so.
And I didn't mention this to you, Selectman Pacheco, but before we put this on the agenda, and you can, you can attest to this, Madam Administrator, I did make sure that your, not just your concerns, but those concerns were addressed, and some sort of a compromise was reached, because those are, those are concerns, and that's what we're here to do, is represent people.
Right. And we're a rights of farm community. Like I said last week, that it's not a slogan, it's a real thing. So, I'm glad we're able to come up with a solution for this, for this farmer.
Absolutely.
So, I'm going to make a motion then that we approve this contract for J and R Precast Inc. for the, in the amount of $17,855.
With an approximate start date of April. Is that okay? Is that a friendly?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Actually, that's a, thank you, Selectman Goulart, because I think that this, our scope said for a contract of one year, and that, that helps us, so, yes.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion passes. And I do want to thank our resident farmers for feeling comfortable enough to let us know what their concerns are. We like that. That's why Selectman Pacheco has office hours. Selectman Goulart's always available, and always willing to listen, as am I. So, please, if you have a concern, comment, question, never hesitate to reach out to one of us. We're always happy to help. And Madam Administrator, too.
I worked on a farm for six years, between the ages of 10 and 16, so I know what it's like for farmers.
It is not easy.
Nope.
Next, under, and we're moving on to new business, is Pink It Up Dayton Approval for Use of Town Hall Campus Roads, and I believe this pertains to this Sunday, October 7th.
Right, yes. The, we have a little flyer here, so the Dayton firefighters, the local firefighters, are working with Cabbies. Hold on, we have them somewhere.
Cancer Care Community Advisory Board.
That's the one. To raise money for this group. This is why we are in pink tonight, to help support that. I did verify with the police chief that he was okay with this event taking place on the sidewalks, albeit, but on public ways, and so, this is here for your approval. And I do just want to take a quick moment. Some of these things that I've seen come before us to use this field back here, many of these great programs that we do, they do actually require, under Chapter 140, entertainment licenses. I just don't want anybody to be surprised when Karen and I make you fill out an extra piece of paper, to start abiding by this. So, that's just like foreshadowing, I guess, that will be coming, so.
Is there a fee for that?
Yes.
I assume that we would waive fees for nonprofits as they come up?
That is your practice, yes.
And thank you, Madam Administrator. Does anyone have any comments, questions, concerns regarding this request before we, I accept motions?
Nope, except I'm glad the sidewalk's done.
Absolutely.
Because if there are a lot of people walking on Centus Street back in the old days, that had been in the road.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Love when a plan comes together. All right, I'm entertaining motions.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request from the Cabbies for Pink It Up Dayton Day, and allow them to use the town hall campus as requested.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. This next piece of business, little sad for me, but I do appreciate Mr. Tanis' service to this town in very many capacities. Next, under our agenda, is to rescind the appointment of Matthew Tanis to the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board. And before we discuss this, I guess, and I'm okay doing this, but I do think we should at least float the idea to either Chairman Pyers, or even Mr. Pilling. Lord knows he's not going to want to come back to a meeting at like 6:00 on a Tuesday, for example, but, and also to Mr. Bernardo as well, just to see if someone would be interesting, interested in filling that spot. And the reason I say that, and you were on the committee as well, Selectman Pacheco, they are doing, for example, permit regulations regarding marijuana establishments, and so I do feel strongly about having some sort of Health Department representation, so that there's sort of a fluidity between what we're recommending-
Yep.
-and what they're doing. So, I'll open it up for discussion.
We've actually, I asked Roz to have that on their next agenda, to nominate somebody. So, on the 24th, their appointment will be before you.
Perfect. Look at you.
Anticipation.
I love it. Thank you.
Did Mr. Tanis have a conflict with scheduling, or, we don't know?
No, we, we know. He was having, I mean, I sent emails to the email address he provided, and he wouldn't receive them for, I don't know if I was entering his spam folder, because it was sent to multiple people. Sometimes they're strict, I'm not sure why there was a disconnect there, but he had a hard time with the communication aspect, so he decided not to, not to maintain his seat there.
So, I'll make a motion to rescind the appointment of Matthew Tanis to the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion passes. And again, Mr. Tanis, thank you for all that you do, and continue to do for the town. Next, more reading exercises this evening. We are going to read the warrant that we signed for the special town meeting.
How many pages is it?
It is quite a few. I don't mind reading the first couple ones. There's no need to begin, Madam Administrator.
Well, sure. I have an idea, though, in the interest of our time-saving practices. We can go and just give a brief little bit of what it is instead of reading it. So, say-
Like, not reading it.
Right. Right. Article 1 is, as always, to hear the town officials' reports. Article 2 is to pay all the bills. There's about $5,252.84 to pay, and the warrant shows by place.
I think, to your point, I think that that's actually, that will be more useful.
Longer, oh.
No, no, no. To give, like, a summary is more useful because this is posted online, and, you know, we'll email it out, and it's on the website, so anybody can read this. But sometimes we get questions.
Right.
People are like, what is this? Even though you can read it, because it's in, it has to be a weird language.
Right, exactly.
So, absolutely, if my colleagues oblige. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, I just had a question. Karen, are we pretty much all set after tonight to get it to the printer so it can be mailed?
Do you like it to be mailed? We normally don't mail the special. Well, the other thing, too, is if you don't mail it, you've still got to print
it because they're going to, you know how the moderator refers to what's printed? Especially those bylaws and those, all of that?
We can also do that in-house.
Well, as long as there's something, I mean...
We're required, we have to show them what they're voting on, so you're absolutely correct.
So, we tell them, we tell them to bring the mailer with them. But when I saw all of these, you know, sections of laws and that, I'm thinking, Mr. McKeon always says, "As printed in the warrants."
They need to have it, yes.
So, yeah.
As long as we have, like, a stack of copies here before the meeting and then at the special town meeting, I'm okay with that. But still, we'll mail the annual, of course.
Article 3 is very interesting. The Finance Committee asked for this to be on here. This is for the first payment on the police station bond to actually be paid out of free cash, which would take off the tax rolls, would be set the tax rate in November, off of the residential tax, or the whole town's tax rolls. It would be, we did already place this in the annual budget, and it was voted on successfully at town meeting, but the idea behind this is to take a little bit off the tax rolls and pay for it out of free cash. The collective bargaining agreement for the police officers, we've settled, it's been voted on, and will be executed this week. And now, we're required to go get it funded before it's actually ratified. It'll be ratified by you after town meeting. And the amount of this is $145,000. Yes, that is a substantial sum. Most of this is overtime. We do have the town accountant verifying figures. We had Carleen do it, but we always like two eyes on something, so she's been working on that. And all of this would be up to, motions, usually, we write them to say a sum not to exceed, and the motion, excuse me, articles are written that way, and then a motion is crafted to specify the exact amount. And we can't go over what's posted on the warrant. The next one is a request from the fire chief for a, about $40,000 to install an exhaust removal system for the Dayton Fire Department Station 2 and any necessary work relative thereto. The assessors have two articles. One is for $10,000, the other is for $22,000 for the annual valuations that they are required to do. The Dayton Police Department is requesting $9,000 to purchase bulletproof vests in anticipation of a grant reimbursement, so they'll get that money back. To see if the, excuse me, Article 9 is, I'm so used to reading something, is the animal shelter, the towns match. It says a sum not to exceed $50,000, and the animal control officer will, if this passes, will combine that, those funds with the $25,000 that the state has provided for us for an animal shelter. Article 10 is a sum not to exceed $30,000 to repair the roof at the highway garage, which is currently leaking. We need to repair. Article 11 is a request that I am making to engineer, grade, and repave the town hall campus. We actually did just get approval by the planning board. It was considered a minor site plan review, and they did approve it tonight. Thank you very much, Planning Board.
Thank you, planning.
And I've requested the Finance Committee to look at municipal capital stabilization funds for this, not free cash. Article 12, apparently, there were some errors on the CPC amount, the Community Preservation Committee amounts that we had to vote on at annual town meeting. So, Article 12 and 13 are to rectify those and to place additional monies. I don't believe this actually impacts anybody. It's just to designate the funds.
How do those errors happen? Do we know?
Yeah.
No?
I think CPC is a sticky wicket always. I have some ideas on what to do on that.
Okay.
That's, we'll save that.
We'll revisit those after the meeting?
Yes. The accounting department had an intern this summer, so she's requesting $2,000 to fund that. We do believe he'll come back during winter and the winter break for him. He was a great addition. Thank you, John. He learned a lot. I know he got out of it, a lot out of it. Article 15 is, the town clerk is requesting funding $1,570 to purchase a laptop, which she would use for elections. She's also requesting $172.70 for a special file cabinet that would hold the ballot, so there's a sort of requirements for that. The harbor master is requesting $12,000 for equipment additions and upgrades to the boat. The Old Town Hall needs an air conditioner for the special, the meeting room, and that is coming in at $7,550. The Cemetery Commission is requesting $35,000 for field data collection to be used to create a GIS layer so that you can put the graves on the GIS layer. This is a bit of an extension of a Eagle Scout project. The treasure collector is putting in her article to fund the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust, $200,000, which is always a good idea. Article 21 is the marijuana bylaw. This is backup for an amendment because when we just passed this in annual town meeting, and when it came down for a business to locate, the building on a property that is directly in the overlay district is within 100 feet of the residential zone. So, they, the planning board is looking for requests to change, to allow variances and waivers. And at the same time, they're looking to allow cultivating facilities in the industrial zone. That public hearing will take place at 6:00 PM at the high school, which is an hour before town meeting, if you'd like to go there. The Cannabis Policy Advisory Board Committee is also meeting that night at 6:00 PM at that hearing. It's a joint meeting so that we can make our recommendation for town meeting based upon that. Okay. Does that make sense? Article 22 is the town administrator bylaw. Article 23 is a street acceptance for Mockingbird Lane. And Article 24 is the street acceptance by petition for Sylvia Way that we've talked a lot about. Both plans are in file with the town clerk. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is your town meeting warrant.
When's the FinCom going to vote?
The 11th, October 11th, which is Thursday. And they, I do believe, are looking for your recommendations, so I have prepared a little something for that, in case you're interested.
So, we completed 8C, and in the spirit of openness, let's discuss or vote to recommend articles for town meeting warrant. Do we want to just go one by one? How do we want to do this, colleagues?
I think we do them as a blanket.
Okay.
We just approve what was just read.
What I will say is, there's nothing on this warrant, in my opinion, that I have objection to being on the warrant. I know we already signed it and all that. I'm okay recommending these articles from the Board of Selectmen, just my opinion, to voters. Selectmen Goulart, I'm sorry, I'm holding both.
Thank you.
No problem.
I wanted to make sure she got that.
The public hearing is 6:00 PM on October the 15th, right?
15th, for the marijuana. Amended zoning bylaws.
All right, amended zoning bylaws.
And then, the cannabis advisory board will have a very brief meeting after planning concludes, so that we have a recommendation either way for the voters as well.
I've also, I've actually posted it at the same time so that we can be there.
Yeah, because we'll be there, yeah, for the planning. We want to hear what planning has to say.
So, is the, I should have asked this before, is the Cannabis Commission, the advisory, now looking for somebody to fill the vacancy? Or are you going to try to get a board health person?
So, he was on there as a Board of Health member. It was also by position, so that we would have a core group of areas to weigh in on the decisions that would be impacted by a marijuana business. And so, we've requested the Board of Health to give us a new nominee.
Okay.
And their next meeting, I think, is the 10th, which is Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Brief, while I'm remembering this, Mrs. Brady, for October 24th, I think it might be beneficial for this board to take a vote on Mr. Reins's membership because he's an alternate member. I know this is just, it's kind of like a formality, but I think since Mr. Pacheco resigned when he became a selectman, we should act on, or not, making Mr. Reins, like, a member, not an alternate member. He can still vote already, so it's not that big of a deal, but that just came to my mind.
So, I...
He would fill your position.
ZBA, yes.
Yes, for the ZBA. He was an ad hoc member, anticipated but wasn't able to vote. I wasn't sure if we already did that. We didn't do that?
No.
No, because we haven't actually gotten something from the ZBA to make sure that he's the rep, so we'll work on that behind the scenes.
It's my understanding that he is. We talked to Nicole, and she'll verify that. So, I do have some concerns about some of these articles. I don't, I'm not in favor of all of them. If we were to approve all of these, I believe it's going to exceed the amount of money that we have in free cash.
Exactly.
I'm not in favor of, at the special town meeting, unless it was an emergency, to raise and appropriate money for these, some of these articles. So, for example, on Article 9, which is the $50,000, up to $50,000 to the animal control officer for the animal shelter, I, my personal feeling is that we should go down to $25,000. I did make a visit, thanks to Stacy Ferry, to the animal shelters that we presently have. It's in bad shape. It's disgusting, quite frankly. I wouldn't put my dog there. So, I'm glad that we got the grant for $25,000, and I, in favor of improving the animals, the police station to make an animal shelter, but I don't think we need to spend $50,000 doing it. I did speak to Stacy briefly about that, and she's, she may, I can't, I won't speak for her, but she thinks she'd be able to work with the $25,000. We may need some volunteers, if it's possible, on the town building to paint and stuff like that. I'm willing to do that, as well as my wife is willing to participate and help out at the shelter. But the shelter that we presently have is not heated. It's, you know, if we have any animals there, it's not fair to the animals in winter. It's in really tough shape. So, I would ask that we only approve up to $25,000 on Article 9, the spend up to $25,000. So, would I make that, you said the Finance Committee is interested in our recommendations, so...
Yes.
I'll make a motion that, on Article 9, to read to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, is some not to exceed $25,000 to be combined with the grant funds in the amount of $25,000 to be used to renovate a location for the use of the animal control officer as an animal shelter or act thereon.
I feel like you're alone on that, Selectmen Pacheco.
It sounds like it.
So, that motion was not seconded.
What I want to say is, I think, in looking at all of this, and certainly, if anyone is opposed to anything that we've read tonight, then they should say it tonight. What I'm thinking of, instead of voting on them individually as up or down or whatever, if the board members state which ones they don't support the number on or don't support at all, just make the public statement tonight. Then, when we go to the Finance Committee, that's where you state what you, what your recommendation is. And also, at town meeting, if the FinCom goes with the 50, then at town meeting, you get up to make the motion to reduce it on town meeting floor. The only reason I didn't second the motion is because of the discussion last week about, we don't want to go back again. And what I said was, and it's kind of a Finance Committee thing that's happened in the past, when you're not sure exactly what you need, you go with a higher number, because then at town meeting, you reduce it on town meeting floor, as opposed to moving ahead and say, we don't have enough money, then you've got to go back again. So, I like the option of getting, hopefully, we're going to have a cost estimate, and the $50,000 on the warrant is tops, plus the 25, because we've got to make sure we get the grant. And that way, if we get the numbers before town meeting, we can reduce it on town meeting floor, and if we get the numbers after, we don't have to spend it.
Right.
So, that's what my thought is.
I thought, let's just back up for a second. So, I actually just gave you a spreadsheet. The red number is everybody's request thrown in there, including the money, the $150,000 I'm asking for. So, the total dollar amount of what's going on, I'm sorry, not the red number, the one on top there, 1.149 million dollars. So, that means with all of the free cash we have, which is 900 and, what did I say? 900,411?
Something like that.
That's what we have of free cash left over after our, oh, here it is, 910,441. That's the amount of free cash we have left over after our payment for the modulators, which took place on August 21st. So, if you look at that kind of middle column, it says MALRECs. The, I've placed the items that I think that we should fund out of free cash, and the, it does say RNA next to the CPC, but that's not, that's just like a cheat sheet for me, that, you don't have to worry about that. And then, the paving one is $150,000 that I'm requesting comes out of stabilization, so the Finance Committee will have to vote on that.
And how much do we have in that?
A million dollars on each.
Can we take some money out of one of those accounts for the trailers?
No, because the DOR saved the day and got our free cash approved the day, the day of town meeting. So, we took it all from free cash.
So, that's untouched.
The first vote for the $300,000 was also on free cash.
It was $200,000 from...
Free cash and $100,000 on raise and appropriate. That was the first vote. And then, the April 20, excuse me, August 21st vote was all free cash.
Strictly free cash, yeah.
So...
Regarding the paving...
Yes.
Does it really need to be done now? I'm concerned about spending, that's kind of emergency money, so I'm concerned.
So, I understand. So, it's, I'm very concerned about all the people that walk back and forth between the two buildings and how rolly it is. It does need to be done. I mean, I walk, I mean, I wear high heels, so shame on me, but I walk and I'm like, I can feel that my feet are moving, you know, uncomfortably.
Would a repair take care of it versus the whole, paving the whole thing? I mean, that's a lot of money.
You know what I was thinking? Route 44? You know what the state has done? They've done it on 140, they've done it on 44. I call them giant patches, but the worst parts of the road, they haven't reconstructed the whole road. But they fixed the really, I'm talking between Dayton and East Providence line. That road was terrible. I mean, it was. And what they've done over the past two years is not blacktopped the whole thing, but they did the worst ones, and then, when some others turned up, they did those. And it's side to side, they're all painted and striped, but they have not had to repave the entire road, because the entire road is not a problem. So, I'm wondering if that can be done out here. Just a thought.
Yep.
But, I mean, the state's doing it, which made me double take when I saw it.
I think we should take things one by one. So, first, we started with the animal shelter, so let's finish that, and then we'll move on, if anybody has any other concerns. Is that okay?
Yes. So, Dr. Pacheco. Mrs. Goulart, you mentioned that at the Finance Committee, but we're not taking votes at the Finance Committee, is that correct?
No, they will, they will, they will ask us what we think. And I was just looking at this, the way this is, all right, Article 8D says, "Vote to recommend articles for the town meeting warrant." And what I'm thinking of is, yeah, we need, as members, to say, if there's something in those articles that we don't like, say that tonight. But then, we meet with the FinCom, and they're going to ask us what we think, so we'll have another opportunity to tell them what we think. Then, they're going to vote.
He, I spoke with Ed Schwartz, and he's requesting that, I mean, he didn't put it in writing, but he's requesting the board's collective recommendation, so that, right. I mean, if you don't want to give it, you don't have to. Right. I mean, if you don't want to give it, you don't have to. Right. So I was going to say, Jess, you go through it, you, and somebody doesn't like it, you just say hold. And then the ones that are outside the hold, you recommend.
I don't even think we need to go through. I think if my, I'm sure my colleagues are prepared. I know you have notes. I know you always do too. So if you have something now, let's discuss that, and then we'll, everything else that's not discussed, the board's okay with. So we don't need, I don't think we need to go one by one.
Well, what I was going to say, the rest of what I was going to say was, after we state if we have any articles, say what we want to say tonight, then we can vote to recommend the articles, with the exception of those placed on hold, which will be the ones discussed. I don't have any holds, because again, I'm, I'm operating under the, the way we did on the FinCom. You put the number on there, because you can always reduce it. And if you don't have that exact number, then you don't have to spend it. You still control the spending. That's my only thought, because I agree, I don't want to go back and say, we need more money for this, or we need more for that. But anyhow, I'm, I don't have any articles that I want to say right now, change from what has been presented. I'm ready to go to the FinCom and say, hear what they got to say, and, and maybe there's going to be something brought up that I can say, you know what, I agree with that. We didn't have that info before, or if we get any kind of info from the estimate, you know, but-
It did meet, by the way, just so you know.
Okay, so anyhow, but certainly if anyone else is going to, yep, bring them up, I mean.
I mean, I share, but I've spoken at length about this, and I feel like I've had to circle around. But I, I totally share your concerns regarding the fifty thousand recommended in this article for the animal shelter to match with the twenty-five thousand dollars worth of grant funds. I'm no building official in any capacity. I just don't think that twenty-five thousand plus twenty-five thousand would be enough to get it to where it needs to be. I've also been in that animal shelter. So we share those same concerns regarding the state of the animal shelter. And I, I really feel strongly that you are, your strategy regarding this warrant article in particular is correct, because if we get new information, which we don't have here tonight, and I know that's hard without that information, I'm totally okay, and I'll be the first along with you, to reduce that article on the town meeting floor if it's not necessary to have that fifty thousand.
I agree. My concern is, you know, as far as the animal shelter, we don't have any hard numbers as to how much it's actually going to cost. So we're, I don't want to spend the taxpayers' money to raise and appropriate at this particular meeting. We already, if you add these all up, it's over the free cash that we have, and that's troubling in itself. We should always try to save some free cash for the rest of the year. We don't know what kind of emergency is going to come up.
Oh, we will have free cash left over. We definitely will.
If we approve all of these, we won't have-
Well, according to Mr. Swatson-
Yeah, you know, I hear what you're saying, but if, if all of these articles are approved by the townspeople, then we don't have any more free cash. I think it's important that the board of selectmen, we take positions on monies that the town's going to expend, you know, spend. And so I'm willing to go through, well, there's a lot of them that I agree with, so we can go.
Can I just ask one question? So why, instead of taking twenty-five thousand dollars off of the animal shelter, why isn't your recommendation, because there's more money in that article that's going to have things go back on the tax rolls? So why wouldn't you take it from there?
So what do you, I'm not sure what you-
This article right here?
Which is what?
I know you don't want me to say that, but I'm just, I'm asking.
It's okay.
Which, I'm-
I don't, but it's okay.
Remember the second article? It was regarding the police station payment.
It's Article Three.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's four hundred something thousand, so you'd get more money taking that from there, and then reducing the tax rate by less, or going back on the tax rolls less than you would getting the twenty-five thousand dollars out of the animal control.
Okay, that whole, that whole thing is, is Finance Committee. And their feeling is that with the kind of free cash that came back this year, the four hundred and fourteen, it's almost four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, to use that to make the payment for the first year, it's not lots of money, but it helps, if you will, with the tax rate. It'll, it'll lower it a little bit, you know? And it's like a good faith effort to the citizens of Dayton that we had two million in free cash, and you know what? We're taking four hundred and fifteen thousand off the top and doing that with it. That's, that's what that's about.
Well, I don't support taking any money. I, I'm okay with the articles as they are. I was just wondering why we're trying to save money on the animal shelter repair when there's more money elsewhere in the other articles. That was, it was more like philosophically.
I think we need to do something about the pavement around Town Hall, but I seriously am wondering if we can do, if we don't do the entire thing, if we can do what the state has done. I mean, they've done it on major highways.
Had you spoken to superhighway superintendent?
I haven't. No, I haven't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking.
No, I was asking you.
Yes. And we got it approved at the planning board level today.
But did everybody agree that a repair wasn't going to cut it? It was going to need-
So there's nothing to repair at Old Town Hall, because it's gravel, so you have to redo it. Well, while you're redoing it, you're going to redo the walkway, and then while you get to there, why are you just going to patch that one spot when you're fully paved?
So I guess what I'm getting at is Superintendent Ferry thinks this is, okay.
He actually told me it needed to be done, that we've delayed it for a while.
Needed to be done. Okay, that's very different.
So I just, I think it's very important, because we have quite a few people walking back and forth, and I think about it every time.
Well, it's a liability, and I understand that.
But, but this is a classic example of us getting a figure to repair something, and then we have to add additional money. So we had a figure to repair or update the, the Old Town Hall, the Grange Hall, and then now we're talking about paving over there, but that wasn't taken into consideration when we talked about monies to open that building up, so. I just think we, we need to be accurate with figures, and I just, for example, the animal shelter. I used to work for the state, so whenever you say, this is his fifty thousand dollars, give us whatever you don't spend. The state spent the fifty thousand dollars. They didn't, there was no money ever coming back, and, and if we're going to go up to fifty thousand dollars for the animal shelter, we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars. I think people are going to be prudent over there, but they're going to see that they have this cushion, and, and they're going to spend it.
But what if we spend twenty-five thousand and it's not where it needs to be? Aren't you coming back to the people?
I won't necessarily be coming back to the people, but I, well, but the thing is, we don't know where that fifty thousand dollar figure comes from, right?
Agreed.
We don't know, so.
Agreed.
I'm not in a, I don't feel I'm in a position to recommend fifty thousand dollars when we don't even know how much it's going to cost. I'm more comfortable recommending twenty-five thousand dollars, which would be a total of fifty thousand dollars, and some volunteers. There's already people that have volunteered to do some work for the animal shelter, and if we can reduce it that way, I'm comfortable with that.
Is volunteering allowed? I didn't think so.
It's very, very carefully, I guess I can say.
And why is that, though? Because-
So anything that's funded out of, out of a article, like this would be, now needs to be paid prevailing wage. Even, like, if I went over to paint, just to help out, I would be paid at a prevailing wage rate, because that's what the law says. I mean, it says it right there. I think it's kind of silly, but that's what it says.
Agreed.
So if we bought the paint, and somebody came over there and like volunteered their time, you're now in a gray area. It's similar to what the Bocchi Court brought up, that it's a very gray area of donated materials, and who's doing the work, but it's town property. So, I caution you.
I just feel like if volunteerism, which I think is fantastic, I think it should be something that municipalities are sort of allowed to do, but I also feel like if it really were permissible, we wouldn't be in this situation. Someone would have already volunteered, and it already would have been up to, you know, where it needs to be.
If you want this, my personal opinion on the animal shelter, my, my recommendation's also twenty-five thousand, because I think we could actually do a decent amount of work for fifty thousand. Stacy could get, it's, anything's better than what we've got right now, first of all. And then Stacy can get to where she needs to be, Phase One, and then Eagle Scout Project, or maybe in four years, come back to the town. I don't think the town would begrudge us if in four years we said, okay, we've been able to bring in this many dogs, we've been able to raise this much revenue, and then we have these local receipts because we're functioning as a normal shelter, we need to upgrade for X, Y, Z. I think we could have a, a good argument there. So I don't think the townspeople would begrudge us coming back four or five years later, to like expand operations, if that's what she wanted to do. But I think fifty thousand would do. Most of it's demo. That's easy. You're done.
The problem with that building is, when you start demoing it, you don't know what you're going to find. And my concern is that if we only end up with fifty, meaning twenty-five grand and twenty-five town money, that we get to a point and we can't finish it, because we don't have any more money, and we ran into a problem. As something as simple as, when I was first on the board, there was a rat problem down there. And I mean rats. And we hired a local contractor to go in there and start plugging up rat holes and doing some repairs. And it, it cost more than we had anticipated because of some things that were found. And obviously, that was just a patch job, because it was a health problem, basically, with rats and all that. But it was, it was the town garage. It's been modified and changed over a period of time. Now it's going to go back to, let's say, let's say it's going to go back almost to the shell it was. We don't know what we're going to find in there. That's one of the concerns. And where it's, another thing was that we had, I'm trying to think if at one time we only had one bathroom in there. There was a situation with bathrooms also, at, back at that time. And, but in any case, I, I'm just looking at play and at say, we talked about the hundred and fifty for paving. That wouldn't affect anything, because that's coming out of stabilization. So that's not going to affect transfers or raising appropriate.
We're getting off, let's stick to the animal shelter. So my, I'm going to break this stalemate right now. I feel comforted knowing that you spoke to Animal Control Officer Ferry. I know you did as well, Madam Administrator. And it sounds like she is okay with the twenty-five thousand dollar figure.
Yes, I'm not saying she's advocating, but she is okay.
But she knows better than anybody.
I indicated to her what my recommendation's going to be, and she was okay with it.
And I agree that at the end of the day, something's better than nothing. So I'm okay with our recommendation, or mine personally, or yours personally, our recommendation as a board being the twenty-five thousand with the twenty-five thousand matching grants. And I wanted to thank you both for doing that sort of due diligence and kind of, you know, listening to what the concerns are from the animal control officer, because ultimately she's got to be in that building.
Yep.
So it's something better than nothing, and I think by doing this for people who want the fifty thousand, you know, I supported that when we started this, but I do think that we're showing people that we, we do value the animal shelter. We value the animals that are, you know, go through the animal shelter, and we value our animal control officer. And ultimately, I'm okay with taking the recommendation of my colleague and the town administrator for twenty-five thousand dollars with the matching grant. Do you have any?
Nope, so now you can do the vote.
Absolutely.
If he makes the motion.
I'm making, I'm accepting motions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm repeating my motion that I made before, on Article 9, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to be combined with grant funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be used to renovate a location for use by the animal control officer as an animal shelter or act thereon."
I will step down and second that motion. Discussion?
Do we know when we're going to get the twenty-five from the state?
Once we draft the scope of work, but you can't draft the scope of work until you know-
Got the money.
The money you're dealing with, so after town meeting.
So, on the, on the motion, ideally, we would have the time to find out exactly, with reason, as to how much this would cost us. But because we're getting this grant, we, we can't wait until June, for example, to, to vote on this, so.
Right, because we have to use the funds by June thirtieth.
Right, so that's why we're under the gun, so. So obviously, I'm supporting the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Particular article? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain, because I want to hear the Finance Committee discussion on this.
Absolutely. We have one abstention. Okay, that motion passes. Colleagues, any other particular articles that you'd like to make a recommendation different than what is on the signed warrant?
I, I-
Yep.
Second.
Mrs. Goulart.
I'm back to the hundred and fifty thousand. Certainly the engineering can be done, so I would put the engineering before the paving. And then, as part of the engineering study, I would like to know if it's possible to do this in maybe two steps, simply because, and I'm going with what the state has done on forty-four, that road was horrendous, and yet they didn't do the whole thing. And what they have done has been an improvement. Now, if we did it in two steps, took care of the worst part, do the engineering study, do the worst part first, and we would have the plan to finish it, and then we could do that. So I would just look at that engineering study. Answer that question about whether or not it can be done, let's say, in two phases. Or at least look at what the state does in maintaining major roads like one forty and forty-four, that's all I'm saying.
My, I guess, question is, and, and I, and I totally understand and agree with the comments and concerns regarding this particular warrant article. If, so what's the proposition regarding Article 11? Are we just saying not have, we're not going to recommend this article at all? Are we saying we're going to do it at seventy-five thousand?
My, my recommendation would be to table this article and to address this again at the annual town meeting, where we'll have the answers, or some of the answers that Mrs. Goulart has mentioned. I would like to know if we can possibly do the patching, but I would like to have somebody come in and be able to tell us that. I just think when we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's an item that can wait until our June meeting, where the townspeople can raise and appropriate, possibly take it from stabilization, but I think it's a better meeting to address something like this. So my recommendation would be to table this.
And I just want the public to know, we're not saying the article's not going to be on here. The people will ultimately still get to decide.
Absolutely.
And if you disagree with us, I won't be surprised. So I just want the public to understand that. These are just our recommendations as a board that we're discussing here tonight. Any comments, Madam Administrator, before I entertain motions on this?
I will just say, we included a higher figure, because we weren't sure if the planning board was going to make us go through a higher level site plan review, and tonight they voted that we did not. So they called it a minor site plan review, and then they approved our project. So we're ready to go. The engineering can be out, unless, of course, the board of selectmen votes to do, as Selectman Goulart suggested, and basically ask for a tight plan. But really what it is now is milling and paving. And the two worst parts are the, I don't know how to describe this, like the back driveway, if that makes sense, over by where the field, where the stone wall is.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
And then over by the grassy area where many people park over and over again to use the playground, or special events, lights on, there's a, when there's a lot of cars here, that's where they fill in and park. So those are the worst areas. And then, of course, we don't even have pavement down where Old Town Hall is. So by going by worse to, I, I mean, I think that it's a little bit apples and oranges, because we have a place with no pavement at all, and then we have places that, what you would qualify as the worst, are already paved. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
So in a hundred and fifty thousand, there was money provided for engineering, but we don't have to do that anymore.
And I only know that tonight, but of course, this warrant article was due the nineteenth, so.
Right, right. No, I understand. But my other thought is, um-
I mean, I don't know.
So we don't have to do the engineering, so what we need is a, a better cost estimate-
Right.
For what we have to do. Now, in thinking about the Old Town Hall, to access the lower level, there's that driveway. That needs to be paved, because it's just-
Just like grime.
It's, it's just gravel. And- And then the parking area down near the-
Playground.
The handicap area is not paved. Then there's those big slabs of granite, so that's not, it's not paved up to the-
Nothing is paved. It's like the park, so the playground, and then there's the lot, and then it starts to be this like grinding, gravelly thing.
On the way to the pavilion in the Old Town Hall.
It's crushed asphalt, is what it is.
I will say, before we, before I accept motions on this, I do understand the concerns of my colleagues. I'm supporting this article, because Mr. Ferry, our highway superintendent, recommended it. Sounds like it's necessary. Our town administrator is saying the same thing, and the planning board signed off on it. But I understand the concerns of my colleagues, so.
But we don't, I don't think we need a hundred and fifty thousand, because you're going to take it off the engineering.
And that's all the planning board had signed off on, was the engineering, not necessarily-
They didn't comment on the cost at all.
Or the recommendation that'd be paid.
That's a good point. Thank you, Selectman Pacheco.
I'm going to second the motion to table tonight, contention on us getting a better estimate of what it would cost to actually pave this, mill it and pave it, because I don't think it's going to be a hundred and fifty thousand. And maybe by the time we meet with the FinCom, or-
We might have a more, you know, kind of precise thing.
I don't know what, I don't know, we'd have to pay an engineer, but that, that's gone away, so. So I will second the motion to table tonight, in anticipation of getting a revised number by the time we go to the FinCom.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Table is no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Abstentions? The table passes. The table passes.
The table passes.
All right.
Is it next to the desk in there now?
Yeah, it needs to be. Colleagues, any other- Colleagues, any other specific item, articles, excuse me, that you have taken exception to? Have any suggestions? Selectman Pacheco?
Yes, I, and this is difficult for me, Article Nineteen. Since I'm part of the Cemetery Commission, I did not attend the, I had a family emergency, but the last Cemetery Commission meeting, when I believe that this was discussed, I also think that this is something that should be brought up at the annual town meeting and doesn't need to be funded at the present time.
My.
It's thirty-five thousand dollars for the public.
My follow-up question to that would be, if we did postpone this particular article, Madam Administrator, are we holding up any work or anything that's being done? Okay, then I'm, I will.
Well, I'm sorry, what do you mean? Like, of course you are, because they won't be able to go forward with doing it. But it's not like there's anything started now that you're withholding a payment.
So this is a project that hasn't, besides what the Eagle, what Eagle Scout Owen Conti has done, we're not holding anything up in that regard?
Right.
Okay.
I think I understand the question.
This thirty-five thousand, that would be for all the cemeteries?
The, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we know? I don't know.
No, I believe it's for twenty-five cemetery. It's the twenty-five cemeteries that the town has contracts, and we maintain those cemeteries.
Oh, okay.
So there's fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five cemeteries in town. We don't maintain all of those. I was just at one of them last week. It's not being maintained. But this is the ones that we actually have somebody come in and cut the grass and.
So that, some of the ones that are out in the middle of the woods, they're not?
No, no.
Yeah, my concern was just simply like holding up work that had already started. Any further comment on potentially, before we have a motion, tabling this until the annual? Okay, I'm entertaining motions. Selectman Pacheco?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table Article Nineteen. But I would, it's almost a contingent to what Ms. Goulart did. To hear from the Finance Committee as to what their position is on this, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, I will second, yeah, I will second to table it to the FinCon meeting because the Cemetery Commission's going to have to be there. And I want to hear more. I don't, I don't have any information really on this. I know what they're talking about doing, but, so I'll second that motion to table until we go to the FinCon.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. This article is tabled until at least Finance meets. Selectman Pacheco?
I have, well, I still think we're over the figures. So do you have any comments that you want to give us, so that?
The two on my list that I did not include in, how do I say this, in my, in my final sum, was outside of the GIS layer because I also didn't have that, the boat equipment, the twelve thousand dollars for the Harbor Master. And the forty thousand dollars for the Plimo vent.
What is that?
That is an exhaust system for Station Two, and that was a hard one for me to take off. I visited that station. It's clear we need an exhaust system. However, we are not staffed there yet, and I don't know about the plan to staff it. So I would like to see this at the annual. But that's, I, I don't know how the Finance Committee feels on that. They might approve that.
So when you're saying it's not staffed, we don't have anybody there?
They go like very, it's not like the Station One. It's intermittent.
Correct.
They, when there's a call, they run and get the equipment. But I've attended, I can tell you, I've attended a few, well, not really social events, but.
Oh, yeah, we were there for the vaccination day.
Well, no, that, they had the going away, well, not going away, the party for when Michael
Yeah.
was leaving, and it was, it was a meal, and we were upstairs. It was a, a well-attended event. And I understand that this is an exhaust system. My concern is that in that, in that space downstairs where equipment is, if those trucks are opened up, even with the big doors open, I'm concerned about exhaust. That's all I can think of is. And I haven't, I haven't heard anything from the fire chief, so I don't really know what, obviously, he thinks it's necessary. He wouldn't have put it on here. And I, if I heard what he had in mind, maybe I'd have questions. But at this point in time, because to me, this is a safety thing. I'm a little concerned about saying, taking off the list.
So are we all, Selectman Pacheco, are we all in agreement as a board that we're okay with the article for the exhaust system?
Well, at least till the FinCon meeting. I think we're going to get more info. Right, right.
For the purpose of tonight.
Yes.
Now.
Thanks for bringing that up to us.
Oh, absolutely. Regarding the twelve thousand dollars that the Harbor Master requested, why did you not recommend that? I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but I'm just curious if there's.
Chief is going to be mad at me, too. And I'll just cop, like, everything is necessary, right? Like, people don't put in unless they need it, so I don't, I don't take these lightly. I just think that the boat we just purchased, I believe, I know that there are things that need to be added to it. I have not been on the boat, so maybe I am at a detriment. But I just didn't think, weighing the other items, I felt that we could, we could pay for more items with taking that one out. And I do have to say, if we did not have that meeting in August and the school did not ask for modulators, I would be recommending all of these.
Oh, yeah, no, that goes without saying.
But we just have to pick and choose, unfortunately.
So my question to you, or to my colleagues who were on that boat ride, does this twelve thousand dollars pertain to anything safety-related? Because then, I'm going, I will absolutely support it for the special.
The thing with the, the, I'll, the big item in the twelve thousand, and Mr. Pacheco can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not a boat person, but anyhow, the biggest thing that I saw, and I, I call it the roof, but that's not what you call it. Is it a canopy? All right. That needs replacement. It's, I believe it's the original one.
It is.
When it was built. And the reason why you can't say, okay, do the canopy now and do the rest, come to the annual. Safety lights and other things are attached to that. I think there's some kind of a, excuse me, aerial or something. Do you remember? It's got radios and all sorts of communication stuff. And so you can't replace, I'll call it the canopy, because on it are the lights. And in effect, one of the lights is in a position that something got modified on the boat so that the light doesn't shine where it should. There's, like an obstruction or something. If we could do this piecemeal, like, replace this now and, you know, give them six thousand, tell them do this. But because of that roof canopy with those lights attached, and, and we did look at this, and we could see like corrosion and stuff, those things obviously are metal. And as I said, I believe they're all original equipment to the boat. And then, something got added because that's what caused this light to not be able to shine the way it should. But I don't think this is one we can do piecemeal. That's what my concern is.
I guess my question regarding this is, the boat is not going to be used for the next probably couple of months because it's going to be winter eventually. So why can this not wait till the annual, I guess?
Well, he would be out on the water in April.
Okay, so then that makes sense.
So he would need the money, but then put it on there.
But if something happens in the river, and it's winter, as long as that river is not frozen over or close to it, that boat could end up in the river. I mean, yeah, you don't normally, you're not patrolling the river in the winter, absolutely, that's true.
But I didn't think of that point, like, if there were an emergency. So that's, I'm totally okay with this article as it is.
And he's going to have to explain this to the FinCon anyhow, and, you know, but.
You can ask them questions there.
Well, I have some of the same concerns that you have. I definitely feel that there's a need for this. I think Mrs. Goulart explained the need for this very well. We both were on a boat ride recently on this. But maybe we should wait until, especially if we have to look at numbers here to the June meeting. I'm okay with leaving it as is. Let's see what the FinCon says. Not to make a motion to table or whatever.
Sure.
I absolutely agree that this is something that needs to be done. It's an old canvas canopy. It's maybe, what, twelve years old? Is it like two thousand and six, the boat maybe? So it could be twelve years old. You can tell it's old. Some of the equipment needs to be updated. So I'm okay with leaving it as is. Let's go to the FinCon meeting and let's.
I'm sure he's going to be there to answer questions.
Right. Anything else?
Yeah, anything else, Madam Administrator? I didn't see anything.
I mean, I lowered, in my recommendation, I lowered the payment on the police station to just the principal payment, that we would take the principal payment off the tax rolls and that the interest would still be covered by the town. But again, that's the Finance Committee's article, and that's just how I.
I understand.
But my thing is.
But another alternative is, one interest payment's been made.
Right.
So the, that other payment, that second, there are two interest payments. That second interest payment could be.
Bottled up in this.
Paid from the money that was appropriated, and then the principal would be looked at. So again, I think we're going to have to wait and see what the FinCon says. But, but I know an interest payment's been made, so.
That is true.
There's some flexibility there.
I think so.
Either way, any money sent is, is saving it from the tax rolls.
All right, we've been talking about this for forty-five minutes. Does anybody have anything else?
It's a worthy discussion.
It is a worthy discussion, but I need to call a quick recess, so.
Okay, well, how about if we do a quick vote?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Hold one second.
No, I just wondered about the other articles that aren't monetary. Are we going to vote on those also?
Well, again, I think the assumption was the things that we didn't sort of specifically say needed to wait for FinCon or tabled, we're giving our seal of approval on the other ones.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Is that okay?
All right with me.
Yeah, right.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend the articles for the town meeting warrant as discussed, with the exception of those that we indicated that we would table until the FinCon meeting in anticipation of additional information.
So we tabled Article Eleven, Article Nineteen, both of them.
You tabled Article Eleven, and you held your recommendation on Articles Nine and Nineteen for Finance Committee.
In Article Nine, we reduced the amount to twenty-five thousand dollars. All other articles, I'm in favor, so I'll second Mrs. Goulart's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. The ayes have that. Cable, I'm literally calling just a two-minute recess. We're almost done with our agenda. We have a very brief new business item. We will be done very shortly. Is that okay? All right, two minutes. Cable, ready whenever you are. It really is.
I'm like shivering.
Could save money by getting the AC off.
The report did come today.
Oh, nice. All right, thank you, public, for being understanding. We're moving right along to appointing members to the Dayton Trails Committee. Mr. Jason Quinn, also a zoning board member, doing a fantastic job. And also Chris Chandonay, a member of the Green Communities Grant Committee and the Cemetery Commission.
Number three, Chris. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Jason Quinn and Chris Chandonay to the Dayton Trails Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
I think the first two.
They are.
Well, we get a chairman and a clerk.
Exactly. Not a quorum, though. We're moving on down there. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. And thank you very much, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Chandonay, for your continued service in various capacities to the town of Dayton. Very fortunate. Okay, we did receive, moving on to correspondence, a email from one of the firefighters regarding the Dayton Junior Firefighters Community Service Project. It looks like.
They're restoring the Colonel Dutra Memorial over on.
I was just looking for the start date.
Tomorrow.
Perfect. I was, I was just making sure, like, is tomorrow the fourth? Thank you. Did you have anything else you wanted to say about this?
Yes, so I, we just need the Board of Slackman to approve their work on public property. I have been assured by the fire chief that proper safety precautions will be taken with a car with lights. And thank you to the junior firefighters for their service to the community.
Absolutely.
And I suppose the fire department for making it all happen.
Absolutely. And not only that, but also making us aware of it so we could, you know, act on this tonight and also commend everyone for their service. So I am entertaining motions.
I'll make a motion that the Dayton Junior Firefighters do a community service project at the Corporal John L. Dutra Memorial sign located at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Announcements, and I'll go through these briefly. Again, these are part of the weekly email we send out and post on Facebook. Pink It Up Dayton, the Cabbies Cancer Care Community Advisory Board will be hosted by the Dayton Fire Association. It is their five K Walk-a-thon that will be held on Sunday, October seventh, at the Dayton Lions Pavilion located behind Town Hall from nine AM to twelve PM. Registration forms are available at Town Hall. For more information, contact Tom Adiris at tommed@comcast.net or at five zero eight eight four four six zero six nine. A Flu Shot Clinic will be hosted by the Dayton Council on Aging on Thursday, October eleventh, from twelve to two PM in the lower level of Dayton Town Hall. Please bring your insurance card, and if you have any additional questions, call Rite Aid at five zero eight six seven six three three seven zero. Early voting will be held in the town of Dayton during the weeks of October twenty-second and October twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, for the November sixth. for the November 6th state election. Early voting will take place in the lower level of Town Hall during the hours of 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. And again, that schedule is part of the weekly email we send out and post on Facebook. A free breakfast for Dyton veterans will be held at West Dyton Congregational Church, 2767 Horton Street, Dyton, Massachusetts, at 9:00 AM on Saturday, November 10th, 2018. The 40B Committee is still looking for one at-large member. The newly Dyton, the newly formed, excuse me, Dyton Trails Committee is still looking for members. I believe there are three positions still open on that committee. And Primetime is still looking for adults in need of daytime activities and friends. Next, under Selectmen's Reports, oh, I'm sorry, we have some, ooh, last-minute additional announcements. This slipped its way in here. Thank you, Mrs. Brady. It's the new glasses. Under the Sun's Harvest Day will occur at Farm Festival, 1050 William Street, on October 6, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And that's Under the Sun Harvest Day on the Farm Festival. Excuse me, I said that wrong. Bristol County Agricultural High School's Fall Show, exciting, will be October 19th, 20th, and 21st, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on those dates, at 130 Center Street. And I look forward to being there. The Lions Club Arts Festival will be held at Arujow Farms at 1522 William Street on Sunday, November 4th, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the Dyton Lions Food Bank Distribution will be held this month on October 20th, 2018. And again, they do, they are doing it in the Lincoln Village Community Center as well as the lower level of Town Hall. So that's awesome. And under Selectmen's Reports, I do not have one, and I'm gonna throw this over to my colleague Selectman Goulart first.
You wanna talk about the heritage thing? Because I got another one here, it just came into me.
You can speak about that. I wasn't there as long as you were there.
Okay, um, this past Monday, at Heritage Park in Fall River, there was a number of programs that were held. From Dyton, in addition to me, were Bill Fretette and his wife, and Jim Digits, both from the FinCo, excuse me, Conservation Commission, and Selectman Pacheco. There was a Narragansett Bay Estuary Program Steering Committee made a presentation. There were presentations from the Ecological Restoration Mass DER Committee. The Regional Director of the Southeast Regional Office at Lakeville was there from DEP. And then there was the award ceremony at 10:00, and it was called Celebrating Our Local Champions. And the recipients of the various awards, and they received a nice framed certificate from our own town, Dyton Conservation Commission. And the presentation was given to Mr. Fretette and Mr. Digits up there together. And it was because of the Conservation Commission's work in preserving, acquiring, preserving, protecting, saving, you describe it, to the largest salt marsh in this entire area. And Save the Bay is really focused on that salt marsh, Broad Cove Salt Marsh, because of the size of it and also because of the varying conditions that are there. And the other, the other recipients were Colleen Brown, who is the Conservation Agent for Swansea, and Ed Tanner, who is the Principal Planner and Zoning Officer for the town of Bristol, Rhode Island. The, after the break, there was another program, and Save the Bay was, was there. And they actually showed pictures from the Broad Cove Salt Marsh. It was wintertime. Mr. Fretette was there all bundled up, and he was working with the lady from Save the Bay. And I think her name, that was Wendy Ferguson, was from Save the Bay. And she showed a lot of pictures, the clearing up the trenches. If you saw that funny-looking skinny, I called it the skinny bucket loader that was down there. That goes down there, and it is very, the bucket is very narrow. And they use it to clean the ditches, so the water will flow, so they don't have impounded water, because where there's impounded water, mosquitoes breed there. So they were taking care of that, along with Bristol County mosquito control. Beth Lambert was there from the Ecological Restoration Department.
Is that the dam lady?
She's the dam lady.
The dam, like the dam.
Yeah, yeah. And I did, I didn't get to speak to her, but I passed a note to her telling her that AstraZeneca has offered that property to the town and that we are having a 21E done on it, and we'll let her know how it all comes out. But that we were looking to acquire it and protect it, keep it as open space and recreation. So it was very, very nice. It was good to see our Conservation Commission singled out for the work at the Broad Cove. And I did explain to them about the work that Mr. Fretette has done on his own as part of our stormwater program and about the platforms he's built. And we may be invited to make a presentation before DEP in Lakeville when they have a regional meeting to talk about our stormwater program and how we've incorporated so many boards, our schools, the Aggie School, everything about that.
The Regional Board meeting?
Excuse me?
Is it the Regional?
Yes, yes. So we'll, we'll see if that happens or not. And, but it was, it was really a good meeting. Do you have anything to add?
Not to that. You all have the background.
Yeah.
I just want to mention that, as you probably know, I have office hours here, usually one day a week, usually on Mondays. But this coming Monday, it's a holiday, so I'll be here Tuesday from 10:00 to noon. If anybody has any concerns or any problems, anything you want to address with me, I'll be here to listen to you. So please call before you come here to make sure that something has to come up in my, my life, to make sure that I'm here.
The other thing I have, which I got just this afternoon, I attended a meeting of the Narragansett Financial Corporation Corporators Meeting. I'm a corporator. That's, that's the, I'll call it the parent company for Baycoast Bank. I thought we were gonna get an update on building projects, but what was announced today was remarkable. There will be a press release coming out in a week or two. Baycoast Bank has voted to get involved with the, providing can, banking services to cannabis-related businesses.
That's great news.
Now, what this means is that the whole purpose, why are they getting involved? Because it's a cash-intensive industry, and it solves a problem. Reduce cash on hand physically present at the businesses that's stuck in vaults or wherever. And to reduce cash on the streets and to provide advice, work, payroll, vendor payments. They will not be doing loans to fund businesses. There is one other bank in Massachusetts that is providing these similar services. Now, they will monitor very closely all transactions. They will identify anything that looks like possibly money laundering and other illegal activity. This brings the cannabis industry above ground, so to speak. The bank will know its customers and the neighbors, and the neighbors will get to know the businessmen running these. They will conduct enhanced due diligence on the companies and the owners. It, for the bank, it creates another way to increase profitability and allow the bank to do more in the community, because Baycoast is a community bank. The actual handling of cash would be handled through one branch bank that hasn't been designated yet, because what they're really hoping is all cash will be picked up and taken right to the Federal Reserve Bank. So they want to keep it a clean operation and know that the money coming in is legitimate money. But they talked about how, the prediction is that by 2022, which is less than four years away, anticipated sales will range from 18 to 22 billion dollars across the country. And then they talked about the states that have both, just medical and then, medical and recreational. They talked about the various legislation that's been passed around the country. But anyhow, I said to Nick Christ, who is the president and CEO, "Nick, I got a Selectmen's meeting tonight. Is it all right if I..."
Break the news?
"...publicly state what you said?" I got, I got a few notes. And he said, yes, he said absolutely, because as I said, he says, "We will be doing a news, a news release." There will be no direct advertising. There will be intensive accounting on, onboarding. One branch will receive deposits or directly to the Federal Reserve Bank. And if any customer makes a mistake, it's a one-strike-only thing. You make a mistake, you're gone. You're not gonna deal, the bank will not deal with you. So he said that they've been studying this for quite a while, and they've put in the necessary controls. There is, or will be, a credit union that's gonna get into this business. But right now, there's only one bank, and they thought it was somewhere near Medford.
Century Bank.
Yeah, that sounded like the name. Yeah. So anyhow, that will be coming to the area.
Good news.
That is good news. Right down the road.
I told him, I said, "We got a, we had a town meeting coming up that we've got a bylaw that, that deals with this." And I said, "I think the people in Dyton would be very interested in hearing it." So he gave me okay to go ahead.
Absolutely. Great news. Selectman Pacheco, did you have anything else under Selectmen's Reports?
No, I don't.
All right, moving on to, and thank you, Selectman Goulart.
You're welcome.
Moving on to acknowledgements. We don't want to acknowledge anyone tonight?
We're acknowledged out from...
All right, we got enough acknowledgements. All right, moving on to minutes. And I am entertaining motions. One will be to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2018. And the other will be to accept for review the minutes of September 26th, our last meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 12th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. And I do have one question. I guess this is more of a procedural question. Accepting for review the minutes. If I make edits to the meeting minutes before they get accepted, what is permissible? Like, am I allowed to just mark it? I don't understand why we even do this.
So you accept for review, that's the formal submission of the minutes to the board, and you're verifying that it's an accurate portrayal of your statements, essentially. So if you said, "The sky is blue," but in fact, the minutes said that, Selectman Pacheco said, "The sky is blue," you would be like, "No, no, I said that."
And I'm not changing it to be like, "The sky is green," correct? Like, I can't just go back and...
It has, it's not opinion-based. It's, it's objective. It's an account of...
It's like writing the history.
Right, it's the account of the meeting. So whatever happened at the meeting. And for minutes, you don't have, it's not a verbatim transcript. It's, there was discussion of the warrant articles. The Board of Slakman highlighted Articles 9, 17, 11, and 19, and discussed them at length, and then the motions, and that's it. I mean, you don't really need to say, "Selectman Goulart said this." And so, I mean, it's nice to have for context if it's contributing to the...
We post the meetings.
Right, but if it's contributing to the conversation and it changed the vote in some way, you should probably include that. But you're just required for discussion, motions, list of the documents.
So if it's a very minor change like that, we wouldn't get new copies of the minutes, we would...
Karen would...
Actually, I just have a note about that. I just wrote it. So we're gonna tweak this process a little bit.
Yeah.
But we can certainly get you all the minutes that have been changed, because Karen will write them. I'll look at them as well. And, you know, most of my edits are like, put these two sentences together as a paragraph.
Which is not...
Which is not changing kind of...
Doesn't change.
So you, your position to nip this in the bud is it should come back to us before...
Not if it's very minor.
Okay.
Minor stuff.
Okay.
Well, you'd get them in your package before the...
Yeah, so I'm actually, that's my, I want to make sure that after they're edited, they become part of the next... So let's see, September 12th, as edited, so once all those changes are made, they become part of the packet.
Okay.
That's just something for us to tweak out on timing.
I think it's good if we, we really can shorten the minutes to summaries. Because if you really want to hear everything, just go to your computer, and you can watch it.
So the, the minutes are the historical document. They're the record. So you're only required to keep recordings for six months. I know we keep them for much longer. But, you know, 50 years from now, when like, computers don't work and there's no more internet, which will never happen.
They'll be out in the air.
Never happen. But our, you know, our technology doesn't translate, I guess. They would still need the minutes, and so they'd go to the written, the written form. That's the accurate. Or if they were called into court, usually it's, if there's two different...
They're not gonna play like a YouTube, uh, yeah.
Well, no, that's not true. No, we have had episodes of cases where the... It's not always a judge, but the person who's gonna make the decision would subpoena or get a copy, a CD, and watch.
In the case of what happened last week, though, our equipment shut off, and there's no recorded documentation of what happened at the end of it. But so we're gonna rely on the minutes. So that's why the minutes are always the...
I didn't even know that. Thank you for that.
Yeah, but the other thing that's good is, when you get them for review, which means you don't really approve them, because you haven't done the final...
You're accepting them, yeah.
If you find errors, you can correct it before you approve it, because the old way of doing this was, the minutes would, I'll use a school committee meeting, the previous minutes were sent out with the package, and let's assume they read them and they approved them. And then down the road, somebody says, "Hey, you know what? I don't think that was right." And then they go back and say, "Well, you said, you said," and they figure out what they both said. And you make the correction the succeeding week or so, or if it's a once-a-month meeting. Well, unless you cross-reference the first minutes that have what got corrected a month later, you don't get the whole picture. So at least you get a shot at accuracy.
Absolutely. All right, I'm entertaining motions relative to 13B.
I'll make a motion that we accept for review the minutes of the Selectmen's regular meeting on September 26th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the following warrants. 14A-19, the amount of $89,290.16 payroll. 14B-19, the amount of $794,689.34. And 14C-19, the amount of $168.84, the last two being accounts payable dated, all dated October 3rd, 2018, be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Public input. All right, so at this time, as chairman, I will enter, entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating portion of the public body. I do so declare, open session will not reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Roll call.
Aye.
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 All right, Cable, thank you so much. I hope you get to go home, spend time with your family, eat dinner. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful evening.